I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Montague County Board of Education. It is Wednesday, November 12th, 5:00 P. M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight, and we have no delegations, correct? Okay, reports, discussion, follow-up action. Child nutrition.
Yes, the board had requested this topic be placed on the agenda for discussion. So, I mean, how you want to proceed with that?
We'll open it up for discussion.
I guess we'll open it for discussion then.
Um, I put together a little packet of information here regarding meals and what the, oh, sorry, what the USDA requires for our national school lunches. And I want to, number one, thank Teresa for making these copies for me. But what we see in front of us is that we're looking at a minimum amount per day, so we're not actually looking at how many grams of protein or grams of vegetables and fruits our students are getting, but a minimum. Um, I also, I must not have put it on here, um, we do have a idea, not an idea, but the National Institute of Health actually has different guidelines for how much protein students should be getting a day, and it's very different per age. And especially when we get into grades nine through 12, the, uh, that our vegetable was a juice box. Um, and so I think that our vegetable was a juice box. Um, and so I think the parents that were here, community members that we've been talking with, um, really want to see more fresh vegetables rather than falling back on a juice box. And we know that food prices have gone up for everybody, uh, not just the school district, but everybody involved. And so I think we need to have a discussion about what we can do from our side to improve school lunches, but also keep in mind cost.
I love the, um, the new hot breakfasts. I know that took some work and a lot of feedback from different people in pushing that forward, so I appreciate that, and I know it means a lot to the elementary schools. Um, we can keep nutrition and also serve, um, good food at, at, at the cost, and that's what Dr. Morgan was saying. And just keeping, you know, I know in that department, we, we, we had more people at one point, not less, but just an oversee of that department, ensuring we have the right things and doing it, just like anything in life, um, an overseeing of that, uh, the nutrition in our county is extremely important.
I was wondering if we could speak to, um, the, the fruits and vegetables that are packaged, like they come in. I, I know when I go to the store, if I buy a bunch of grapes, it's a lot cheaper than if they have them bagged or in a little container. Is there, is it, why can't we just buy in bulk more?
Uh, we can, and, and that is one change, um, that we have had, that we've talked about, um, is to go back to the bulk purchases for the sliced apples, the carrots, um, the grapes. Those are three things that we started, uh, just recently purchasing in the small bags. Now, we get them from the same vendor. We get those from West Virginia Harvest. West Virginia Harvest takes, um, their bulk purchases and then puts them in, um, the, the bags when they're fresh. The idea being that with them being in the bags, they will stay fresher. Uh, we tend to run into problems with those items, grapes, um, and grapes and apples in particular. Obviously, it, all of us have experienced that when we cut an apple, if it sits for too long, it turns brown, it's unappealing, um, so we're trying to avoid that. Um, but we are going to try, uh, to get them in bulk, and then if we can't get them in bulk, which we haven't been able to with the apples, um, uh, the cooks are going to take them out of the packages and put them on the trays, and hopefully in that time span they won't turn brown and gross. Um, but we're going to look at that, we're going to keep an eye on that. Um, the carrots shouldn't be an issue, um, they should last. Um, the grapes in the bulk, um, sometimes they tend to come in again and, uh, grow moldy and soggy and squished very quickly, and then again, when those go on the plate, they become very unappealing. Um, they stay fresh in the, in the packages, but we're going to try those in bulk as well and see how that goes over and see if we, we can't combat some of those, some of those things. So, in recognizing some of the, um, the criticisms about those particular items in the bags, there was a, a very logical rationale for why it was done, um, but because there have been concerns raised, um, we're going to try to pivot a little bit there and see if, uh, see if it works out with some of the bulk items.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Do they have access to, like, oranges or clementines?
Yes.
Things that might last a little bit longer anyway?
Absolutely. In fact, I was at Mylan Park on Monday morning, um, to watch the rollout of, uh, one of our first hot breakfasts for the year, and I believe there were three fruit options, um, for, uh, the kids that morning, and they consisted of, um, a banana, a, um, a tangerine or a clementine orange, and, um, then the apples in the, in the package. So the kid, the kids had a choice.
All right, sounds like we're, uh, looking at the problem and trying some things, so it's a good thing. Thank you, Christine, for this, uh, list. All right, next up, we have transportation.
I have another handout, sorry. I'm a teacher. Um, so, uh, Mr. Murns has joined us at our last two board meetings to discuss what's going on out on Stewart's Run Road, um, and I'm not going to lie, I've never been out there. Um, so I drove out there the other day just to see what, what the concern is and how long of a walk, because you can tell me a mile, but I don't know what that is. Um, so I included the legislative rules from here in West Virginia. Uh, number one, we have a responsibility as the board to make sure, uh, that our students are safely being transported to school. Um, the highest priority in establishing bus stop locations must be the safety of the students. Um, every effort should be made by county boards to select a safe bus stop location with ample waiting areas for, for students. With irregular terrain, special consideration must be given in establishing a bus stop location. Um, if you look on the second page, I actually have mapped out, um, the Murns home to the Moose Lodge. We also had Mr. LaRue here two weeks ago. Um, his home is actually two miles from the Moose Lodge bus stop. Um, again, I've never driven out there, and when I had to turn from Little Indian Creek Road to Stewart's Run, um, on page, I guess this is page five, there is a very scary intersection that, uh, I myself did not like, making that left turn, um, onto Stewart's Run. I can't imagine a sixth grader walking in the dark, uh, trying to cross the street to walk against traffic. You can also notice, um, I put two street views there, thanks, Google, um, there's not much room to actually walk on the side of the road on Little Indian either. Um, there's, there's brush right up against the road. So, the walk is pretty substantial, um, a 31-minute walk or a 46-minute walk to the Moose Lodge. Um, and I mentioned here, I did not map this, but one UHS student also lives between the Murns and the LaRues and needs transportation. That's a 1.6-mile walk to the bus stop. Uh, so I looked at the bus information, right, 3:59, which picks up, it's scheduled to pick up students at 6:40, but it shows up at 6:28, and it drops children off at Westwood at 7:00 A. M. Um, the latest bus stop, looking at all the buses that go to Westwood, the, the latest bus that drops off at Westwood is at 7:05, and the warning bell is at 7:10. So there's a little bit of flexibility there. And bus 3:59 does not depart Westwood until almost 8 o'clock for its Skyview run.
I'm sorry, what time was that?
It's all here.
Okay.
Um, so, it's dropping off at 7:00 A. M., the warning bell is at 7:10 A. M. On the other hand, in the afternoon, there is a bit of tightness, okay? Uh, it, bus 3:59 departs Westwood at 2:30, uh, drops the children off at the Moose Lodge at 2:57 to do that 35, 45-minute walk home, and then its last Westwood child is dropped off at 3:20, but then it needs to turn around and get to Westwood, or I'm sorry, get to Skyview for a 3:45 dismissal. Um, I made a list on the last page of things that I think we should talk about, uh, including what is the BOE's responsibility to make sure students have safe access to bus stops before and after school? Complaints about bus stop safety come up regularly, either by parents at meetings or via email, and some parents choose not to approach us because, uh, I, you know, I wrote low levels of political efficacy. They think that we either don't care or we're not responsive or that they don't make a difference, and I'm wondering how we can change that, because we're all partners in our students' education. Bus routes are set and released to the public about two weeks before the first day of school, and at that point, it's too late to make any changes to adjust the route if there's a problem. So how can we make sure that the routes work if they can't be changed after they are set or publicly released? Um, a bus to Skyview does run down Stewart's Run Road each morning and afternoon, so it isn't, I'm sorry, it's Mylan Park, so it isn't a concern about whether a bus can fit down that road. It's a very tight road, it's, it's a gravel road. Um, and Mon County schools have picked up Westwood and UHS students on Stewart's Run in the past, as recent as 2022. So I know that, um, I believe, uh, Ms. Tellerico contacted the Murns and, uh, someone from the bus garage also contacted the Murns to discuss some possible, um, alternatives, um, specifically in the afternoon, and what we see is that, um, you know, I don't think that it's a question of convenience, it's a question of safety, right? It's a question of safety. I would not allow my child to walk this route. I, as an adult, would not walk this route. Um, and so I'm not sure how we can solve this without it being a question of, um, someone having to leave work early to pick a child up at a bus stop or for the child to go to someone's workplace and then them, them have to leave early. Um, I've looked at the Dominion Post, um, and there's been a number of unsafe bus stops that have been revisited, uh, most recently in Falling Water. Um, and so I wonder, I, I, there is, you know, I understand that there's tightness, not just with how many bus drivers we have, but also with the number of routes that a bus has to do and runs every day that a bus has to do. But I'm also wondering, um, how we can work with families in order to solve issues like this.
Yeah.
I mean, I definitely agree that we should figure out how to pick these kids up, because I don't want them walking. And they need to go to school, and if they can't get there, then they're not learning and we're not doing our part.
That's exactly right.
Do have, has, have we come up with any solutions since the last meeting on this particular route? And are there more routes like this that we just don't know about, I guess? Like to have the bus garage look into making sure we're getting all of our kids to school safely. You know, when I used to be at Westwood, kids would try to get to school by walking on Dupont Road because they missed the bus, and I would find out and go pick them up. Like, I would like the kids to get to school if we can come up with a way, I mean, I think it's our job to come up with a way.
How much longer, or have we looked at that, how much longer does it add to the total?
Yeah, the issue for us is in the afternoon, um, we looked at GPS today.
Are they being picked up in the morning?
Mrs. Murns is actually driving her daughter and Mr. LaRue's son to the bus stop in the morning, but she works, so she can't do that in the afternoon.
So in the afternoon, we looked at that, um, the GPS for that bus, dismissal at Skyview is 3:45, and that bus arrived, and this is consistent, today at Skyview at 4:03. So it's nearly 20 minutes after dismissal. So our teachers leave at 3:45. Um, so we're, we're 20 minutes after dismissal, uh, and it departed there at 4:06 to take those kids back to, um, the Moose Lodge.
It leaves Skyview at that time?
Yeah.
What time does Skyview get up?
So if we were to change that, you're, you're talking probably, what, another?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen, 20 minutes added to that before they get to school? So those kids would be sitting at Skyview Elementary till probably 4:15, 4:20, not getting out of there until 4:20, 4:25?
But wasn't one of the solutions that was provided to the Murns and the other people on Stewart's Run that their children should be transported to Mylan Park?
We did offer that.
And then them wait there for, what, a half hour or so until they can be transported home?
There would be a gap in time because Westwood gets out earlier than Mylan Park, so those students would, would have to wait at Mylan until dismissal at Mylan, and then they could catch the Mylan bus and be taken home and dropped off at the elementary bus stops. So, yeah, that was offered.
So either way, there would be children waiting somewhere?
Yes. The difference would be that, that at Mylan, we would have supervision, coverage.
Who would be supervising?
The, well, the buses.
The bus driver?
No, 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 the, the, the staff at Mylan.
Oh, oh, you're talking about the children who are waiting?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So they, they would be supervised. We would have to contract with somebody, uh, and I'm not sure that we aren't doing that now, paying someone.
Do we still have an after-school program at Westwood?
Yeah.
I mean, could they sit in there with them for 15 minutes?
At Westwood?
From 3:20 to 3:45 when, and then walk down to get the bus at 3:45 at Skyview?
I, I, I mean, uh, anybody can stay in the after-school program.
I mean to catch the bus at Skyview, to go back.
Sure.
The Skyview bus doesn't go.
We shouldn't be interacting.
Yeah, we can't, we can't interact, it's discussion only.
Skyview bus doesn't go to their property?
Yeah. So the bus that brings Westwood children to the Moose Lodge then goes to Skyview?
Mm-hmm.
But the elementary school bus that runs on Stewart's Run comes from Mylan Park?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
So that's, that's the, right now, that's the safest option, it appears to be?
What is?
Going to, um, Mylan, right? Is that, am I understanding that correct?
It, it's one of the options that, that, that we've discussed with the family, yeah.
I mean, as far as safety goes, that's, you know, do you see any safety issues with doing that?
No.
So if they go from Westwood to Mylan Park and then Mylan Park home, how long are they on a bus and sitting and around?
However long it takes to get from Westwood to Mylan, probably 20, 30 minutes at Mylan, and then however long it takes to go from Mylan to their home.
Twenty, 30 minutes sitting at Mylan?
They would have to, there's probably a, a 20, 30-minute gap between dismissal, between the two schools.
So we're, we're looking at about a 90-minute at We're looking at about a 90 minute, at least a 90 minute round trip. Well, one-way trip if it takes two legs. Right, 30 minutes to Mylan Park, sit there for 20 to 30 minutes and another 20 to 30 minutes home. That's about 90 minutes.
I didn't add it up, so I.
Well, I just took what you said.
Right.
So this has been looked at by, uh, our administration, transportation, or had, had figured out it?
Absolutely. They have been working on this even late into this afternoon to look at possible stones that we have not looked under yet to fix the problem. I can fix it next year and it won't have an impact on any of these. I mean, we can adjust the times next year. It won't impact any of the, the current students that are, and families that are riding.
If the bus at the Moose Lodge, the one that's dropping them off at the Moose Lodge just went an extra mile down the street, what does that do to the bus schedule?
Throws it off by 20 minutes.
Gets them to school 20 minutes later?
It's, it throws off the afternoon run. So instead of getting there at 4 o'clock, it's going to get there between 4:15 and 4:20.
Just a mile down the road?
Yeah. Because that bus is making two runs. It's, it's making a middle school run and you're talking another, down that road, it's, it's at least 10 minutes one way and then turn around 10 minutes the other way. So it's, it's, it's getting to Skyview 20 minutes later.
So next year would have to be a redoing of everything? That's why we can't do it this year?
Just this section, yeah. Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to reschedule this whole section.
I guess my question is what would change next year? Because Westwood's still getting out at 2:30, um, Skyview's still getting out at 3:45.
I, I don't know the exact, what, the, uh, exact changes that would be made. It probably, I believe it involves adding another bus to that section.
Can we do that now?
Don't have anybody.
What he means is another bus driver. The bus we have.
Can we add a bus driver and put that plan in, in motion and?
Yeah, could we get like a long-term sub? A long-term sub bus driver? For the rest of the year?
I would suppose so, but I don't know that we have any more short substitutes now, but I wouldn't say no to it, but.
Could we entice some of the retirees to come back and just say, hey, can you just fill this in for?
The answer to all these questions is, I guess, is yes. I can't say no to any of it. Would be yes, but I mean.
Is finding bus drivers periods been a task?
And I, I, I mean, we, we get approached all the time about, I mean, we don't offer door-to-door service. We never have. It's impossible.
Two miles and door-to-door is very different. Like, I mean, I think we can get them a lot closer to home and even if we have to add a,
and I'm not suggesting that it's, it's ideal. I mean, but, I mean, this is one of our more remote runs. And I mean, had, I think had we known, we could have made those adjustments early, but we just, it becomes very problematic to make any changes right now.
Would you be willing to look into making that change anyway, even though it's not going to be easy?
What, what suggestion?
By trying to hire a long-term sub or run another route or?
I guess we can explore it.
I mean, the Merns did get in touch with the Transportation Department because they received a letter dated August 14th. So it was before school. We did know about the problem.
And, and we looked at it, but we, we couldn't make the adjustments at that point in time.
So I mean, this is a bigger question of, we release the schedules. Our parents look at them and our families look at them and say, hey, there's a problem. Can you fix this? We still have another 10 days before school starts and the answer is no.
That's not true. We adjust our runs on a continual basis. We, we make, we make adjustments in our runs where it's possible. We make them on a continual basis. And that's based on people moving in, people moving out. Um, I, I don't know that it would be logical to release schedules any earlier than we do because of the fact that we don't, we don't have solid enrollment things at that point in time. Because we, we do get people moving in so late sometimes that it's, it would be difficult to put those bus runs and release those bus runs any earlier than what we're doing. But to suggest that we don't make adjustments, it would be completely inaccurate. Because we, we make more adjustments than we probably say no to people.
Okay, so the Merns have been living there for over a decade. Uh, their daughter has been picked up by the bus for the past six years as an elementary school student. It's not like she just appeared this year.
Well, since 2022, that's been the run. That's been the run for the middle school and the high school since 2022.
When you look at the Mylan Park Elementary bus, their house number is literally a stop. It looks like someone didn't realize that the child was moving from the elementary school to the middle school.
I, I don't know. I, I, I can't answer that.
Okay, I'm telling you what I saw on the internet today.
Okay.
And what is on our transportation website. I agree with Ms. Hagerty. I think that we should look into, uh, hiring a retiree and getting a afternoon bus.
There's got to be a solution.
There has to be.
I, I, I think we've offered what we can. I mean, if the board wants me to create another bus run, uh, for these three children, I'm happy to do that. And that's, if that's what you direct me to do, then I'll do it.
How about this? Just look into it and, and give us the options. If you do this, here's what's going to happen, kind of thing.
Okay.
Well, and I know it.
I think we've, we've done that, but.
Right. Well, what I'm saying is.
I think that we've come down to the only solution really is to run another bus route, right?
Run another bus. That's, that's what I'm talking about. If we run another bus route, first off, do we have a driver? That's going to be the first. And, of course, is, is anybody going to step up to the plate and?
We, we probably have a handful of, of drivers on our sub list right now that would take a, would take a full-time run. It's going to mean one more person coming off the sub list. But I think if, if we, if we put another bus out there, we, we would be able to fill the driver role.
So is that something we need to vote on?
No, this is a discussion item.
But I, I'll voice my, my opinion. I, I think we should add another bus and can try to get a retiree or somebody from the sub list. You know, we're all parents and I don't think any of us would want our children to walk that distance. Uh, it was a hazardous, I mean, I, I, as pictures you took were just, I don't know. Have we? That was a nice, clear sunny day. We're not talking about rain and mud, snow, ice.
Yeah.
That's coming.
Reason I don't get it, John.
Have we ever ran a shuttle, something smaller? Vans, like a van? It's not a bad idea.
I don't, ours are probably all scheduled, uh, at this point. I think if that would have been an option, we would have looked at that already.
The only reason I said, as far as the extra bus and all of that, because we can change it for 15 minutes, but it changes, does it change everybody's, you know?
They would just be running it differently.
What we would be doing, we wouldn't be changing anything. We'd be adding a run for three students.
Okay, that's what I was meaning when I said.
We'd be taking a bus and we would be, we would be adding a run and hiring a driver for three students.
Every child counts. I mean, you're not going to dissuade me by saying three students. So I think that we need to look into this and I think we need to proceed.
Totally agree. That's why we've offered the suggestions that we've, we've offered.
I think you, I mean, thinking outside the box, something smaller and maybe a little bit out of the ordinary of what we've usually done. I call it a shuttle service. I don't know how that works. I know you can't countywide. We have, the bus system works most of the time. For this one incident, we have an opportunity to get better.
Where do we go from here to that point?
Well, I, I think I've got my marching orders and that's.
Well, in a sense, that's, that's why I said.
It's fine if that's the board's, uh, decision or that's the direction they want to move in.
Well, it's, I mean, we've all given you the opinions of it because it was not a vote. So it's, it, uh, you have a lot of leeway, I guess, is what I'm getting at. I'm giving you specifics. Otherwise, we need to put it on the agenda and vote on, this is what we want you to do, so.
I mean, that we, we vote on this next week?
Well, what I'm saying is he can, he can do it without a whole lot of.
Yes. But I think.
What you'd be voting on is approving a driver if I have to hire another driver.
I'm ready for that.
Put something together and if you want to, we put it on the next agenda.
But in the meantime, we could get it moving with a sub. Is that a current sub we have on a sub list? Is that what we're saying?
You all are asking me questions I don't have answers to. I mean, this is something, I got to go back to transportation. I've got to see what we have available. I mean, those, I mean, I can't, I can't sit here and answer these questions tonight.
And that was the question I had about.
I can try to make it happen as fast as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
And like I said, the only thing I would be concerned with is this. Does it do anything to the rest of the timeframe as far as the bus runs?
I, and again, I would say no because I'm not going to ask. Transportation has already looked at what options they have as far as adjustments.
Well, I was meaning if we do this extra, so you're saying this would be totally this extra?
This is total, this is just, there's no other way for us to make adjustments to the runs at this point in time. It's just, we can't do it.
He's got to run a totally separate bus.
The only thing we can do is to, is to add and run a totally separate bus for those middle school and high school students at that location.
Just hope he don't open up a can of worms.
I, I don't see it that way.
No, I'm saying any, in this, believe me, in educationism, it's a domino effect. If you move one domino, you're going to affect something somewhere down the line.
Oh, I'm, I'm aware of that.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. That's why I was asking, does it affect any other part of the runs?
I think Superintendent, if we just add another run.
Again, that's, that's why I asked that question. Because if, we've been through this years ago, where you change this a little bit and moved to 15 minutes. Now I've got Dan Barry saying, wait a minute, I was set up to drive and drop this off. So we got to be real careful about how we do it. I'm not against, you know, picking up these kids, but I'm just saying we got to do it. Stay focused, I guess, on the big picture. All right. Anything else we have? Move on to, uh, new contracts?
Okay. Uh, we do have a couple here. First one is with GeoCom Incorporated Indoor Safety K-12 Solution Project Agreement. Superintendent recommends that the board approve that contract as presented in your executive file.
We entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me. Questions, comments? All in favor signify, I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Mon Health System and Education Affiliation Agreement.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve that agreement as presented in your executive content.
Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. White Oak, 1838 Facility Use Agreement.
Again, Superintendent recommends that the board approve that agreement as presented this evening.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
What a beautiful facility. I'm really excited for this for Clay Patel.
Yes, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
You can tell it's nice by the cost, too. Just side note.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to include Items A, expenditures exceeding $3,000. Item B, the payment of salaries and accounts payable. Item C, the Montague County General Hospital Termination Agreement. Item D is the Mountain View Connector Agreement, and that is a revision. Item E are the field experiences. And Item F are the minutes from your October 28th, 2025 meeting.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? And then there's Jennifer.
Actually, actually, I did do all the work.
Oh, okay.
I'm just kidding. She did all the work ahead of time. I got the easy job.
I, I want to interject something before we get started with the policy reading. Is there, and tell me if I'm out of line most of the time. Tell me I'm out of line. So, uh, is there any way we could separate, um, Item C, Bylaw 10147, compensation revised?
Yes, you can pull any, you can pull any of these out that you want to.
Do I put that in the motion?
Actually, I think, um, a board member, uh, Fatory Morgan also wants to take out a couple. So if you could just identify the ones that you want to deal with separately, um, I'll pull those and read those separately. So which ones do we want out, pulled out?
Um, I, so you want C?
I just want C.
You want, you want Item C?
Um.
Okay.
I was like, I'm sorry, um, I don't have my readers today, so I'm just going to have to deal with.
You got the case.
Old lady me, I have the case. I don't have it with me. GG, um, Policy 7421. Um, and II, Policy 7540.08. Those are the two that I am most concerned with.
GG and II. Okay, so there's three. Any others, board members? All right, so I'll just read through, um, all of these. These are for first reading, uh, which then we'll put out for 30 days, right, Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay. They'll be out for 30 days, uh, should the board approve them. So I'll take these first ones as a group. And there's quite a few, so. We'll just get started. Uh, first is Bylaw 0142, Qualifications. This is a revision. Next is Bylaw 0142.3, Orientation and Training. That is revised. Next, Policy 1617, Weapons, Revised. Policy 2266, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities, Revised. Policy 2312, Class Size, Revised. Policy 2411, Guidance and Counseling, Revised. Policy 2451, Alternative School Programs, Revised. Policy 2605, Program Accountability and Evaluation, Revised. Policy 2623, Student Assessment, Revised. Policy 3120, Employment of Professional Personnel, Revised. Policy 3217, Weapons, Revised. Policy 3242.05, Mandatory Staff Training, Individualized Education Program, IEP. Policy 4120, Employment of Service Personnel, Revised. Policy 4120 Employment of Service Personnel Revised. Policy 4120.01 Food Service Personnel Revised. Policy 4162 Drug and Alcohol Testing of CDL License Holders Revised. Policy 4217 Weapons Revised. Policy 5113 Open Enrollment for Non-Resident Students. That is a technical correction. Policy 5200 Attendance Revised. Policy 5330 Use of Medications Revised. Policy 5335 Care of Students with Chronic Health Conditions Revised. Policy 5340 Student Accidents Cardiac Arrest Revised. Policy 5350 Suicide Prevention. That's a technical correction. Policy 5460 Graduation Requirements Revised. Policy 5600 Student Discipline Revised. Policy 5722 School Sponsored Student Media. There's a technical correction in that. Policy 5772 Weapons Revised. Policy 5780.01 Parents' Bill of Rights. This is a new policy. Policy 5840 Student Groups. This is a new policy. Policy 5895 Student Employment. That is revised. Policy 6200 Fund Accounting. There's a technical correction. Policy 7217 Weapons Revised. Policy 7450 Property Inventory. A technical correction. Policy 8330 Student Records Revised. Policy 8350 Confidentiality Revised. Policy 8400 School Safety Revised. Policy 8400.01 School Security Personnel. That is a new policy. Policy 8500 Food Services Revised. Policy 8800 Religious Patriotic Ceremonies and Observances. That is revised. Believe that's the last one with that group. Superintendent recommends that the board approve those policies for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Do you want to, did you two pull outs?
I was just gonna do those after the board took this, this group.
Oh, okay, okay. Motion, right?
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying.
Oh, I actually have a question. Sorry. Um. Policy 8500 Food Services, um, how does that affect athletic events and football games and all sorts of things like that? Since the sale needs to take place off or away from school premises, um, or, oh, I guess at least one half hour after the end of the school day. So, okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Sean moved and Dan seconded, so.
No, she moved, I seconded. He was just saying we already did it.
Oh, okay, gotcha. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Okay, so we do have three we want to take individually. The first one is bylaw 0147 Compensation. This is a revision. Superintendent recommends that the board approve that policy as presented for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I know, that's, that's quite a jump, 160 a meeting to 260 a meeting?
I think that was the legislative decision last year.
Yeah, my point, but I thought we had a, I thought, I may be wrong, but we have a choice to just keep the 160.
Under this policy, you can.
Okay.
You can vote to have a lower rate if that's what you choose.
Well, to keep the same rate, okay. Which would be lower than, yeah, I got you.
The issue became that board members can't vote on their own pay increase. So when, the way it was originally written, if you had carryover board members, they couldn't take part in that vote. So it would be hard to get a majority vote to increase it.
So the way the legislature rectified it was to say you now get the higher rate unless you agree to the lower rate. So the higher rate was automatic as of the effective date of the legislation.
Okay.
So we did not vote ourselves a raise.
That's right. Because we're not the voters.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Aye.
Okay, we have one negative, which will be down. All right, so motion carries.
This is policy 7421 Restrooms and Changing Facilities. This is a new policy. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 7421 as presented for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes. Um, when we adopt a policy, I like to know how it's going to be implemented and how it's going to be carried out. Um, I personally think we already have a number of policies in place that protect people from being assaulted or hurt or threatened at school. Um, I understand this is a new piece of legislation. I do not think that we should be asking our teachers, our staff, our administrators to be policing what's in people's pants, um, to make sure that people are going in the right bathroom. And so I don't, I don't agree with this.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
No.
So the vote is, let's do it, hand vote, just to make sure. Ayes, ayes, ayes. So it's three and then we have no one no's. Motion carries. What's the next one you have there?
Okay, I think this is the last one we pulled out. This is policy 7540.08 Artificial Intelligence AI. And this is a new policy. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 7540.08 as presented this evening for first reading.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second. Discussion?
I have all the feels about this, this policy, um, specifically about the language around it. I don't think the board should recognize the positive impact of artificial intelligence technology in education. Um, I think it's a tool. I don't think it is, uh, I, as an educator myself of 20-plus years, I don't think AI is necessarily beneficial to our students' learning. Um, I think it can be a tool in a toolbox, but I think the way, the language in this, um, this policy gives it too much power. Um, I don't like that introduction at all. Uh, I don't think that we should be encouraging students to, I, I, how can I put it? I think we need to guide students, right? I think we need to guide students, but I also think we need to help faculty understand how AI can be used. And like I said, as an educator for over 20 years, um, dealing with AI in my classroom over the past three, four years has been a complete nightmare, um, because it's new and we don't know how to deal with it. So while there are some general principles about the ethical use and transparency, and we have another policy that focuses on, um, uh, intellectual property and the appropriate use of this, I think this, this policy just altogether needs to be rewritten because I do not endorse, um, and I don't think the board should endorse AI as a positive impact on education until we truly know what that impact is.
I'm curious as to why it's a separate policy in its own right rather than just being wrapped into our technology and acceptable use policies.
It's a good question.
How it became its own life, rather than being just a part of our technology.
Well, it is, well, it is acceptable use as well.
And that's not, I don't know what the word is I'm looking for, cohesive enough to, it has to have its own.
Powers to be at higher levels than we are have determined that it needed its own standalone guidance for boards of education.
And that's who, the legislature, the legislature or somebody else?
State Board of Education. I mean, that's where.
They're saying we need to have a separate policy.
Right.
For AI.
So we're in essence creating, this is probably a question for Jennifer, creating this policy, but that does not mean we can't go, go back later and, well, I would say, control it better since it would have its own, that makes sense, you know? If it was all rolled into the big picture, we'd have to, you know, whack the legs off of the bigger picture. Whereas with it having its own, we could come back and say, we don't, we've followed as Christina said, we've tried and we're not all that enamored with it.
Sure, yeah, sure, yeah.
We would have, I guess what I'm saying is we would have control, more control over AI if we had this policy versus putting it in, letting it be gobbled up in some other policy.
I, I think it is. It is already part of another one, but I, I think you're right, the larger picture of it is included in state.
Gotcha. So we, we're not giving up control, we're just creating some control, I guess. Anybody else? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 Motion fails. All right, so where are we here? That's, that's all the, all the pullouts?
Uh, yes, that was all of them.
Personnel matters.
Okay, I don't have any changes to your personnel list. Superintendent recommends that the board approve tonight's personnel list as presented.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, questions, follow-ups? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. And there's no new positions?
Uh, there are not.
And personnel list addendum?
We do have an addendum. I don't have any changes to the addendums. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Question, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Excess levy update.
Very briefly, you are aware, we've got our committee off the ground. We had our first initial large group meeting, went very well. We are going to begin asking our levy co-chairs to take kind of over this excess levy update from here on out. So we'll be asking them to, to come to the board meeting and just give you a brief update of what they've been working on. They have been doing some breakouts with their, their subcommittee groups as well, and they are planning another whole committee meeting on December 10th. Thank you. I actually saw that from.
I was gonna say.
That's pretty amazing.
That's technology there.
Uh, but December 10th, so I think we have another meeting before that, so we'll see if they can come in to do that. But that's all I have as far as an update.
Board member updates?
I just want to take this opportunity to wish all three of our high schools' football teams, they're all hosting a home game. I don't know when the last time that happened, but they, well, what, Morgantown's one, Clay Patel's three, University High's seven, they all get to host a home game. Wish them the best of luck. Haven't, sorry, I haven't been keeping up with the, the girls volleyball.
I'll be there.
University High, they, they are still winning.
Be there tomorrow, 12:30.
Okay.
Also, a great job to both the University High and Morgantown High cross-country teams, both men and women, doing a fantastic job. And Morgantown High cheer, doing a great job at state competitions as well. So keep up the great work.
Yeah, cheer is headed to the states, I think, for the first time ever. Spirit of America was last night. If you missed it, you gotta catch it next year because it is the best concert in town. I'm sorry, but it is, it's phenomenal. They do it at MHS, Mr. Reed, Mr. Heinecke, Mr. High School. Put orchestra, choir, band, knocked it out of the park. It was just great, great job. And then tomorrow, tomorrow will be Morgantown High Ladies Volleyball, 12:30, state championship against Hedgesville. So I took the day off and gonna head down there. Also, I want to say there are a lot of kids involved in a play coming up, or a musical called Finding Nemo. Doctor Morgan has one that's gonna be in the, in the show. But I always bring that up. I know it's Morgantown Theater Company, separate from the schools, but they do a lot for our schools and it's all of our, it's all of our kids.
It's our students.
It's all of our students that are gonna be in. Um, school shows are next week and then the two shows are Friday and Saturday, right Doctor?
Yep, everything Friday and Saturday. Um, also, can I say, uh, Westwood and Mountaineer, and I'm sorry if I'm forgetting anyone else, has such wonderful Veterans Day programming. Uh, fantastic, fantastic. Um, and I loved seeing the recognition of our, not just our community members, but our family members in their service.
I just want to thank really quick, the levy committee, Frank and Rebecca did an amazing job at the first meeting. Pretty packed house, so, and I was happy to see some faces in there that will be really good on that committee. So that was awesome.
Before I forget, I'll be calling into the next meeting. Let's make that public. It's a, a global meeting that Sean's gonna be at, so I will be calling into this. I'm gonna work with Danny. We really gotta get like teams, like TV screens, so, you know, I can show my face and watch the meeting. Because you can't watch and be on the phone because it's about a 30-second laugh.
I was gonna say, but I love your pledge of allegiance and the, the echo.
No one's better than Dan on the phone, though. Dan, he brings it. No one says the pledge of allegiance like Dan does on the phone, yes. Proud of you, brother.
I just want to give a, a nice shout out to UHS and MHS band at the Mohawk Bowl, joining forces. What a great performance. It's just, you know, band kids are just, they, they meld into each other without any problems at all. So kudos to them. It was a great program and did a nice job. And it's not happened that many times, so it's a good thing.
Oh, one more thing. Uh, the Mountaineer Middle Choir will be singing with Landau Eugene Murphy at the Metropolitan Theater on December 19th, so if you haven't got your ticket set, you should do it. Uh, Mrs. Drury is doing such a fantastic job with the choir kids at Mountaineer Middle.
They love her.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, enter into executive session to discuss the sale and acquisition of property.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We were, uh. Yeah, we were disappeared. Oh, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Oh, yeah.
I just need Jen and Donna if you want to stay.
Be in the other room.